Call meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, January the 15th. It's 10:00 a.m. I would ask you to stand for a moment of silent meditation and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be careful.
Today for consent and approval, do not have any exonerations.
You share orders as of January 15th. Vouchers: General County Fund expenditures $191,188.75. 911 cash: $12,060.02. Camp Muffley: $2,058.48. Justin Ridge Park: $1,075.67. Home confinement: $12,743.15. Morgantown Industrial Tiff: $4,009.89. Total of $225,326.33. No bonds. I have one budget revision from the assessor's office. This is moving funds within budget 406.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion for approval in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brenet.
Two items for reimbursement today. First is for the VOCA grant, December of 2013, $3,091.59. And the Governor's Highway Safety Program DUI grant, December of 2013, $6,499.81.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Wolf, is he here?
Yeah, he's outside.
Mike Wolf.
I just have a packet.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Of information to give to you as a follow-up from what we did for the storm, the ice and cold that we had early last week, and then what we did briefly to help the southern part of the state in their water crisis. It's just an informational packet to show you, we started every weekend of the fourth, monitoring what the wind chills were going to be. And obviously, it was going to be in areas that was not something that's common here in West Virginia. Our concern was the homeless and then the potential of power outages. And we wanted to make sure that we had proper plans and something to deal with that readily available instead of waiting until it occurred, potentially in the middle of the night. Some of the planning that we did there was the weekend weather calls. We started working with the city of Morgantown, who was outstanding to work with. The city manager, Terry Huff, and her staff helped us locate and prepare Woodburn Elementary Gymnasium as a warming station. And then we coordinated with the town of Granville and the American Red Cross in getting supplies ready for that. We activated the emergency operations center at the county level for just the administrative staff in our office on Monday. And of course, then we requested that a state of emergency be declared for the county. And the reason in doing that is not so much that there's actually something that's occurring here, but it gives me the opportunity to pool resources that we wouldn't normally have. And one of those was mountain line transit. Under a state of emergency, they could provide free transportation. So if we had residents who didn't have transportation to get to a warming shelter, they could send a bus or a van out to do that for us. If it was necessary and we needed help from another county or from the state for whatever resource, then I could request that easily without having to wait to go through proper channels. We did have three residents of Mon County that we did shelter for about 16 hours. Two of those was a family that was inhabitable at the time. And one of those was a transient visitor who was unable to get into the Bartlett House. And so we provided 16 hours' worth of sheltering for them. We had great cooperation from the Kertas House, Bartlett House, the university, and St. John's Parish in getting what we needed from them. The last thing is, and of course, you should have received all the updates that I sent for our briefings to make sure that you knew what was going on, as well as the other areas of the county government. The last thing that we did is over this past weekend, we had received requests from businesses and residents on how they could help those that was in need in southern West Virginia. So Saturday, we began working to make a plan as to how we would collect donations to send to the water crisis. I worked with the Director of Homeland Security for the state, Jimmy Dunnett, and received approval to have a donation location here in Morgantown. We coordinated with WVU to give permission to use the parking lot at the Coliseum. Coach Mazie with WVU Baseball contacted me late Saturday night and said that he wanted to offer his team to help us. And as Commissioner Bloom knows, without their help, I probably still wouldn't be able to move today because there was a lot of lifting to do. But we did establish a drop-off point. We coordinated and collected 411 cases of water, 646 gallons of water. And we pretty much filled a 16-foot trailer full of non-perishable supplies to send down to them. We did that on Sunday evening from 4:00 to 7:00, so that was in a three-hour time span. Giant Eagle of Green Bag Road donated several pallets of water. We're up to about a dozen of those now. And so Monday and today, we have coordinated transporting those items to Charleston to the National Guard warehouse. And they've been warmly received from the state. And we've received many compliments and thanks from those people that were affected.
I would certainly, I think, and other commissioners can, I'm sure will probably echo this, but I really appreciate your proactivity on the issue. And I think it's right in step with this commission being a proactive county commission, that I think you got prepared for a disaster. And we all know that the practice of being proactive is you're better off to be prepared and not have to use your preparedness than you are not to be prepared and have a need for it. So I certainly, I think, would like to thank you. And I think reaching out to other persons in need in other counties, I think, is a classic example of the people in Monaga County that will reach out and help others when they need it. And in addition, I think Coach Mazie, if my memory serves me correct, when the baseball team was playing in Oklahoma and they had that disaster, his players responded and helped the people in Oklahoma. So, I mean, I would really like to somehow formally, if we get a motion from one of the commissioners, to send Coach Mazie a letter thanking him and appreciating the fact that he represents not only WVU, but he represents this county very well, and also commend the players.
I would make a motion to commend the players, as the president just said at the end, both Coach Mazie and his entire team.
And I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd say job well done to all your people, and I'll just say ditto to what the president said. He's absolutely right.
And I'll tell you what I really liked about Mike, and we had talked about it at the last meeting, your proactive stand on. I think that's what we really liked. Usually, we're always reactive after the fact. And I think being there and also getting the updates, as I said, it was really good because when people asked what was going on, we knew firsthand what was going on. So again, I want to congratulate you and your staff. And the other thing I do want to say is, I was fortunate to help, you know, be there. And I want to say that the WV baseball team, first class. I mean, not only they were there not because they were forced to be there, but extremely concerned and very thankful when the people brought it up. And I can't say enough about the Monaga County community. I mean, in six hours of Facebook and word getting out, and the image that we now have of Monaga County nationwide is just tremendous. And I do want to say, Coach Mazie, I mean, I could not believe, I mean, they were running all over the place. And then we had to move it from one trailer to the other, and they never complained. They did, they worked hard. So again, great job, and hopefully, we won't have to do this again. But I'm glad to know that we're prepared.
Thank you. Jill Ware, Scotts Run Residents, Regarding Scotts Run Public Service. If you would, please state your name and address, and just make sure we're on the same communication. You have five minutes, Ms. Ware.
I was told that we had some to meet, but that's all right. I am not representing Scotts Run citizens. I called in, and maybe it wasn't clear. I was going to talk to their situation. I am not representing the Scotts Run citizen group today. I am Jill Ware. I live on Langford Road in Morgantown, West Virginia, and I am a citizen of both the city and the county. And I'm here because I'm concerned as a citizen about the nature of the government as it has been, evinced in this present circumstance. From a brief filed by the Council for MUB and the SRPSD on the Public Service Commission website, to quote lawyer Stranko, "The uncontested facts of record support only one conclusion, that the statutory prerequisites for a merger between the Scotts Run Public Service District and MUB have been met, and that the proposed merger is in the public interest. There are no credible facts of record to suggest otherwise." And this is the important part, "The unanimous approval of the Mon County Commission, Mon City Council, Morgantown City Council, Scotts Run Public Service District, and the Morgantown Utility Board all echo this certainty." The question is, though, is the process by which this merger is occurring in the public interest? "A review of the discussions and all public meetings pertaining to the subject of a merger or acquisition between MUB and the Scotts Run Public Service District shows that every one of these elected and appointed bodies chose to send the situation on to be decided by the PSC, and did not either review or discuss documents and evidence related to the process as presented by citizens and members of the customer base to those elected and appointed bodies." MUB Council cites in initial brief of joint petitioner Morgantown Utility Board, this is on the PSC website, "Mon County Commission unanimously approved the proposed merger. Mon Utility Board unanimously approved proposed operations and maintenance agreement and merger contracts, May 22nd for both these. Scotts Run PSD, no, June 5th for the Mon County Commission. You guys had a delay because of residency question, which actually has not, to this day, really been resolved. The Scotts Run PSD unanimously approved the proposed contracts, May 22nd. No one person in a position of authority was willing to question the allegations made by one member of the board of Scotts Run. These allegations were in direct conflict with the history of an honorable and successful conduct of business and award-winning public district in York County by the Scotts Run PSD and its employees prior to the appointment of the three present members of the board. This was a proactive community development project. This was organized and developed in the community of Scotts Run. Many volunteers worked on that for a very long period of time, and this was a gem in your county. And there's really no way we can argue that it wasn't because during the hearing and before the hearing, a review of that PSD was done by the Public Service Commission, multiple subsections, the engineering section, the financial section, the administrative section, all the review at the PSD, and found that it was well-run, that all the materials were well-maintained, all the sites, all the pumps, all the tubes, absolutely well-maintained. In fact, at such a level of perfection that the DES had congratulated the PSD on many occasions. So where are we? A film of the Mon County Commission meetings of the 22nd and June 5th show that the decision to pass it on to the PSC, they decided to pass it on because there the information could be assessed and investigated. In addition, county commissioners' testimony reveal a lack of understanding as to the irrevocability of these approvals, which perhaps the meaning of which they did not understand. From the judge's recommended decision, quote-
You have one more minute, Ms. Ware.
I'm afraid that this needs a little bit more time. I'm sorry.
The only way I can give you more time is if there's a motion from this commission to allow you more time. We have a standing rule that we generally only allow five minutes.
Is someone willing to-
And in fact, let me just clarify as to why, and the other commissioners can comment on this, is that, you know, this matter before the Public Service Commission, we went beyond the preliminary stages. So, you know, the Public Service Commission has made its decision, and it's beyond our powers and authority. So to sit here and listen to retrospect of historical information, which may or may not be true, I think just takes up time and serves no productive purpose, other than for you to chastise this commission. Gentlemen, I refer to you if-
My only question, I don't mind extending it for two more minutes, but I don't under- I mean, with due respect, I don't understand what you're trying to, if you would just explain what you're wanting from us, then I could, that's all I'm asking, because I'm still confused. That's all I'd like to know, what is it that she is asking?
Elders?
My problem is you're trying to practice law without a license. You're giving legal interpretation. That's what they had a lawyer for. The lawyer could have explained exactly what was said. I wasn't there for the rest of it. That was her responsibility to explain that our limit, whatever Mr. Stranko said, and as Commissioner Bloom said, we don't know whether it's true or not. Commissioner Bartolo said, we don't know what you're saying is true or not. Fact of matter is, is we specifically stated why our hands were tied. The statute said that. You're coming in here, trying to practice law, trying to dictate that we were wrong. Well, your judgment is worth zero. I'm sorry. You're neither a lawyer or have the ability and competence to state whether we were right or wrong. We know what the statute said. We know what we had to do. We had one, two questions. It's all right on the tapes. Everyone could see it. Now, if that was questionable, then the attorney, not you, not anyone else, the attorney-
Which attorney was that?
Rachel Fettig. She could have gone and appealed that judgment, and sought a writ of prohibition to prevent us from forwarding on before a circuit court judge, and said that we did not interpret the statute right. But now for you to come in here and chastise us, when you absolutely know absolutely nothing about what you're talking about, is a waste of my time, and I wouldn't give you one more second if I was present. I'm done with this.
Are you making a motion to extend it two minutes?
I'm extending two minutes to clarify what specifically we can-
I have a motion to extend Ms. Ware's time. Two more minutes is her second. Sorry. I ask the second time, is there a second? Motion being made, and no second. Motion fails. Ms. Ware, your time is up. Thank you.
Excuse me, she had another minute.
No, I looked at my watch. It was-
I know, you said she had another minute, and then we had your comments.
Well, the another minute was taken up. Okay, we'll give you that minute. Go ahead.
Okay. Chairman Callan, this is quoted from the judge's recommended decision. This is a judge speaking, not Jill Ware. Chairman Callan testified that the merger and related issues were referred to the PSC because he was told by Commissioner Bartolo that the county commission had no investigative authority and jurisdiction over the issues raised by the O&M agreement. Quote, Bill Bartolo testified that, "He was not informed that there would be a transfer of the district's assets and customer service list before the PSC approval was obtained." Commissioner Bartolo testified that after the county commission voted to refer the merger to the P, refer the merger to the PSC, the county commission had no further responsibility in this matter. The county commission is the only government that the Scotts Run area has because-
Your minute is up.
You are avoiding your responsibility as a government-
Your time is up, and if you persist in this, I'll declare you out of order and ask the bailiff to remove you.
This is not a chastisement.
I have warned you that-
What we're looking for is improvement and a correction of government. Thank you.
The bailiff here? She's been disruptive to this meeting. Mark music, new employees.
What I want to do, Dave, is take a moment. As you know, we've been trying to put together our own appraisal unit staff, and we've actually conducted interviews here over the last several weeks. We had a total of 22 applicants for positions of field deputy data entry. We were able to conclude all of our interviews, submit our applicants into the PBC committee. On January 6th, I got approval back from the PBC committee on those individuals we sent in for their hire. So what I want to do is bring them forward, just to introduce them, let you know who they are and what we have with them. So, yeah, Dave, yeah. And I'll introduce our field deputies first over this. This is Mr. Dave Donardi. Dave is a familiar person here with the county, has had over nine years' experience of working for the county as appraiser, and a total of over 12 years as valuing property and doing data entry. And Dave also has a master's degree from WVU. Phil Mason. Phil is another familiar face. Phil has over three years of working with appraising and doing field work in properties, and also data entry with IAS, and Phil has a bachelor's degree in education. Brett. Mr. Brett Lamine. Brett is currently an employee with Bobby Doyle and them in maintenance here at the county. Brett comes to us with the appraisers really liked about Brett was his knowledge of the land, the outside areas of the property, that we think that will be an asset to our dishes. So Brett will be coming on with us beginning January 20th. Dave and Phil are currently employed right now as of the first week of June 4th. Ms. Michelle Wetzel. Michelle's is a little bit longer because she's currently with the Barburg County Assessor's Office. She's the assessor's chief deputy in Barburg County. She's also got almost about five years' work in the Preston County Assessor's Office, and her experience goes back from data entry, sales ratio reports, doing land analysis, cost studies, so a little bit of everything that she's been able to do in operating offices. So we welcome her from Barburg County to us, and she'll begin with us on February 3rd. That will conclude our field deputies right there. And our data entry, we have two. You got who's that? Mr. John Alexander.
Come on down. Change this one.
John, of course, is another former county employee, one of the data entries. So he comes to us with a lot of experience, a lot of years in the county government, and doing also the data entry for valuing of property under the current IAS system, too. And last but not least, and correct me here on my last name here, because I'm still learning this part, Deborah Ten-
Ike.
Ike. And Deborah comes in with over 13, 14 years' experience of data entry, and most recently, she's had several experiences with IAS and entering the stuff currently for the county, too, also. So you've added her. So we brought in a lot of experience that we feel will be beneficial to us, and hopefully, you know, we've built, and we have Chris and Chris still, so this is our appraisal unit staff that we put together, and I wanted, like I said, present to you, and suppose that we're here.
Well, we, I think we all agree, we congratulate everyone on your appointments, and we need a motion. Do you want a motion to approve all those changes?
I mean, that's up to you. I mean, they've been done, they've been done through the PBC.
Yeah, we need a mo, we need a-
Yeah, we just need to make-
We need a motion. I think we ought to separate field deputies from that. I'm just teasing. Go ahead and make your motion.
I just moved that we accept the one, two, three, four, six new employees for the assessor's.
I'll second that. Happy lady.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We'll be looking forward to seeing you around. It's fantastic. Fantastic.
We have about four minutes before we have a scheduled hearing for removal of an executor of an estate. Do you have any correspondence you want to cover?
I just had one letter from the sheriff asking to be approved of the transfer of Jonathan Ralston, from part-time processing transport officer to part-time court security officer. Transfer will be effective January 15th, and the employee will now be eligible for benefits. His rate of pay is $2,135 a month.
Move for approval. Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Oh, I forgot to bring mine in, from the Senate.
From the House of Delegates last Thursday for Monaga County Day.
Mine's in the car, from the Senate. We got one from the Senate as well that we need to put up.
Would you mind reading that? It's from the state. Eldon, you want to be our organ? I think that's from the state, the county, so.
The House of Delegates of West Virginia Legislature hereby celebrates the achievements and contributions of Monaga County and its citizens to the great state of West Virginia, whereas Monaga County offers to its citizens and visitors from around the world the best in medical care, tourism experience, from Mountain Fest to the University Art Series, a beautiful view from Cooper's Rocks to a peaceful stroll on the Cape Town Trail, top-rated educational experiences at all levels, a thriving and innovative business community, a nationally acclaimed economic model, and a place that offers big-city amenities with the neighboring feel of small-town life. And whereas Monaga County has been recognized in recent years in the following ways, best performing small metros, best small metros for business and careers, best quality of life and knowledge worker metros, smart places to live, Boomtown, Morgantown top college designation, best places to retire for under $100 a day, most secure small cities, Adventure Town, best small town to live, and best sports cities. And whereas in Monaga County, from Blacksville to Star City, from Westover to Granville, in the heart of Morgantown, and everywhere in between, every day is a great day to be a mountaineer. Therefore, the House of Delegates and the West Virginia Legislature hereby acknowledges January 9, 2014, as a day to celebrate the achievements and contributions of Monaga County and its citizens to the great state of West Virginia, and directs this citation be presented this ninth day of January 2014. Timothy Armali, Speaker of the House, Gregory Emery, Clerk of the House, Anthony Burrell, Member of House of Delegates, Barbara Fleischer, Member of House of Delegates, Sammy Frich, Member of House of Delegates, Mike Mini-Penny, Member of House of Delegates, Charlie Marshall, Member of House of Delegates, Amanda Pazin, Member of House of Delegates, and Dave Petwell, Member of House of Delegates. I would say at this point that the one from the Senate had the same thing, only it was from the Senate, and it was signed by Speaker Kessler and our six senators. Yeah, it was nice.
Very good. I'm sure you all represented as well, too.
Diane did. She kept us straight.
Okay, we're at 10:30. Hearing for removal of the executor of state of-
Town, Best Small Town to Live, and Best Sports Cities. And whereas in Montague County, from Blacksville to Star City, from Westover to Granville, in the heart of Morgantown, and everywhere in between, every day is a great day to be a mountaineer. Therefore, the House of Delegates and the West Virginia Legislature hereby acknowledges January 9, 2014, as a day to celebrate the achievements and contributions of Montague County and its citizens to the great state of West Virginia, and directs this citation be presented this ninth day of January 2014. Timothy Armali, Speaker of the House, Gregory M. Gary, Clerk of the House, Anthony Burrell, Member of House of Delegates, Barbara Fleischer, Member of House of Delegates, Sammy Frich, Member of House of Delegates, Mike Mini-Penny, Member of House of Delegates, Charlie Marshall, Member of House of Delegates, Amanda Pazin, Member of House of Delegates, and Dave Pethel, Member of House of Delegates. I would say at this point that the one from the Senate had the same, same thing, only it was from the Senate, and it was signed by Speaker Kessler and our six senators.
Very good. I'm sure you all represented as well, too.
Diane did. She kept us straight.
Okay, we're at 10:30. This hearing for removal of the executor stated Dorothy Bice. Is there anyone here in regards to that issue?
I think we're representing Dorothy Bice.
There is someone? And would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carl Bice.
Okay, sir, we want to give you an opportunity to, you are petitioning for the change?
Yes. My brother's been in charge of the estate, it's not taken care of. He's not sending in the reports he's supposed to annually. He let the house come up for a tax sale without notifying me or anything about it. It was sold. I need to know where the monies are in my mother's estate went to. In black and white, not his word, because he's not to be trusted by me. And I need to know, there's a form to get sent down to Charleston on the money end of it. I need a copy of that, so maybe administrator of the will. Because he's not here now.
Are you in there on the will?
Yes. Well, it's in the will. I would be taking care of it if he wasn't.
And has this a statement assigned to fiduciary commissioner?
Excuse me?
Fiduciary commissioner. Has it been assigned to fiduciary commissioner?
He was saying-
No, it has not been?
No. Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Who redeemed the property?
I did. Oh, you mean before that? I don't remember that.
That wasn't something. Excuse me, sir. One at a time.
The property that you said went up for sale for tax-
Yeah, it was sold to somebody. I forget it.
And who redeemed the property?
I forget the guy.
I mean, no. Did you redeem, is the property back in the estate now?
Yes, I paid for the taxes and brought it back.
You paid the money-
Yes.
-to bring the property back in the estate? Okay, thank you.
Could I ask you the other two individuals?
Yeah, would you please, if you're going to speak to us, would you please state your name and addresses, please?
Gene Bice, Eight Lane Street.
Larry Bice.
Address?
Eight Lane Street also. He has a face.
Okay. Sir, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Now, one of you gentlemen have an opportunity to make any statements you'd like to make?
I come because I got this certified letter saying about back taxes. The way my mom always handled it, she got a thing in the mail, said the taxes was owed, it was paid, and I never received the paper in the mail saying the taxes was owed.
Okay. Sir, do you have any comments?
I'm just lives there with me, that's all.
I'm asking him.
He's having a hard time speaking to the placemaker.
My question is just very simple. He's asking that you're not completing the paperwork as required to be an executor, and how do you respond to that?
Well, I brought in two piles of papers a long time ago, and I thought that was enough to take care of the problem, and I was waiting for the tax papers to come to me to pay it.
Who did you take that into? The Assessor's Office, or?
They sent me letters that they wanted to see the will of the-
County clerk.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I, I mean, there clearly seems to be a disagreement between, you know, whether you're completing the role as an executor or not, and I believe that, that's the concern. And I don't, yeah, and I, and I'm not sure how do we, can we not give this to fiduciary?
No. It's, it's a waste. The estates are small, it's a waste of money to go over to fiduciary. I mean, you might as well just take all the money from them.
Okay.
You know, by the time they spend money on a fiduciary. So I would, I would not be in favor of that.
Okay.
Apparently, there was an obvious breakdown of your responsibilities. As the executor, you have, I see what you submitted. You submitted your appraisal and everything, but that doesn't end, that doesn't end the estate. You've got, you've got to submit, you've got to submit your, the publication's got to be published, you've got to make sure all debts are paid, you've got to make sure the property's protected, you've got to pay the taxes. Whether you get a notice or not, it's your responsibility to come down here and find the notice to the taxes. You know if there's property, there's taxes on it. You know, those are your responsibilities. Plus, if it lasts more than, if the estate is open for more than a year, you've got to submit an annual accounting of all the money you collected in, what you had, what you spent, and that accounting must go out to the beneficiaries. And the county must be filed here and be published, or, you know, be, be open to public scrutiny. You've got to do all those things.
I didn't understand. I thought the will took care of it.
Well, it says, just a second, sir. It says right here in the information that we were, we were provided on the history here, that you were provided with, with the book, which I know is given, the, the book to show you exactly what your responsibilities and what you have to turn in. Now, I understand that Mr. Carl Bice is the one that redeemed this property from the tax sale. Is that correct?
I don't know.
But if, so you didn't redeem, okay, you didn't redeem it.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that it went up like that. I didn't.
Is there, is there any objection to him to take over and complete the estate? You obviously have a problem understanding what needs to be done.
Well, it was will to me. I mean, how does it behave just because he, he knew about paperwork a little bit more than me, that he can take it from me just because he knows a little bit more about paperwork than I do. Money to pay a lawyer to do it for him, because he drives over the road and everything, he's hardly ever around.
All right, let me ask some questions then. It says here that in the will that Carl Aaron Bice, that's you, correct? That you are to pay him a sum of $5,000. Have you paid him that?
Yes, I paid him that.
Did you pay, pay that?
Yeah, it was a life insurance policy.
You, you received that, sir?
Not a $5,000, no.
To your attorney, I gave the paperwork to him.
There was another insurance policy, like $2,000, I'm forgetting the exact figure. It wasn't $5,000.
No, it was $5,000.
I'll have to read my paperwork out and prove that to you, because it wasn't $5,000.
There's hardly anything, this estate, I don't know why you all are fighting it with it. I mean, you're going to end up giving it all away to lawyers, and I'm a lawyer, but, you know, it's just, it's just a waste. People need to agree and divide this stuff up and end it. I mean, it's not a large enough estate to throw, throw the money away.
Right.
You say it was given to you. What was done with the, what, there's four lots, five lots in Westover. What was done with that property?
I think compared at the time, because I couldn't run a household in two different places, I took my belongings, Eight Lane Street, out of the most valuable things, and nobody's living there at this time.
Did you divide any of that personal property up with the other children?
Well, that was mine. I lived there from the day it was bought. Why would it be turned over to anybody else?
Yeah, was it Mom's name, brother?
Well, yes, it was legally in her name.
That's the reason why, because whether you live there or not, what Mr. Cowan was trying to say-
You totally trashed the house once you picked it up.
Excuse me. Wait, 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 wait.
What, what they're trying to say is, you have all this property, okay? And it's just sitting there, but that's part of the estate, and the law says you have to divvy up that property among all, all the people. What Mr. Bice is asking, not to take the property away, all he's asking, from my understanding, is be the executor, to go through the process to divvy it up. And that's, that's how I interpret it, is that-
Well, that's, that's the problem. I mean, the will has different provisions in it.
Right.
You know, yes, the, the house goes at Eight Lane Street, Westover, but this, there's more than just Eight Lane Street, Westover. According to the appraisal, there's, there's five different lots. Eighty Harrison Street, eighty Harrison Street. And Eight Lane Street. So, yeah, you're right, you got, according to the will, you got Eight Lane Street, but you still got to divide up the other, the other properties.
Me, I haven't supposed to divide everything equally as according to the will.
That's what it, that's what I'm reading here. Also, the automobile. Okay, the automobile was to go to Carl Aaron Bice. Did that go to Carl Aaron Bice?
I think you might be looking at the old will there.
Am I reading it wrong? And all the personal property located within any automobile to which I may be entitled or which I may have power to dispose of or of at my disease unto Carl Aaron Bice in fee absolutely and forever. Is that right?
I don't have a copy of the will with me, but it's like-
All right, let me, let me, it's, it's paragraph six. It says right here in paragraph six. Okay, that's, okay, I stand corrected. That's in the event that you pre-deceased Carl. It goes to Carl. Okay, thank you. So that, all right, so, so if you would die, that's, that's at Eight Lane Street, okay?
So you got Eight Lane Street.
All right, so, so you, you outlived him, so that, that would not apply. You'd still get Eight Lane Street as paragraph four above. So then there's a question of the $5,000 of guardian life.
Sir, I'm told to buy this insurance company. That policy was cashed, cashed in, the $5,000 policy by her. So it doesn't exist. This is old policy. I got to hold a guardian, and they said they turned, she turned the policy back and took the money.
There was one turned over and put in your name.
That's another one entirely.
Let me, let me interject something here in a minute. The issue before us is whether-
Excuse me, wait, wait, excuse me. Excuse me.
Hold on.
You're out of order, sir. The issue before us is whether or not the executor should be changed.
Right.
And I think the other issues certainly are helpful information, but we have a decision and, and to make in terms of, should the executor stay the same, or should it be changed, or is there an alternative course of action that we would recommend? I just want to make one point. I think there's been some relevant comments made, but it's been, this is a comment from the county clerk's office, correct? That this front cover page-
Summary, yes.
It's three years since the appointment of the executor, which is used. The county clerk's office has mailed to him notification of his delinquency and filing either on an annual accounting or final settlement with no response, and that is the biggest concern of the petitioner. I think that has to be in consideration for this commission in deciding whether or not, does it warrant changing the executor? Is there an alternative that this commission would so desire? This estate needs administered, and that's, that's our task. Whether you stay the executor or whether the executor's changed is just incidental to the issue of this estate getting administered.
Yeah, I, I was trying to address Mr. Gene Bice's assertion that everything was already divided and it was a mere technicality. That was, that was what he asserted, that it was a mere technicality. Now, you were Larry Bice, is that right? All right, first off, according to the will, you are excluded from any benefits of this, so you have no, you have no standing in this issue whatsoever, sir. The, it sounds to me like there's enough unanswered question that, that I, I don't accept your assertion, Mr. Bice, Mr. Gene Bice, that everything is taken care of and it's just a matter of filing the paperwork. It doesn't appear that way to me. So the question that we have, if you're right, is do we give Mr. Gene Bice a deadline to file the necessary paperwork and divide everything up? Or if not, we'll roll it over to Mr. Carl Bice? Or whether we just roll it over right now? I think that's our question, and I'd like to hear each of yours' comments before I make a motion.
I have one question for you, Mr. Carl Bice.
Yes.
If we were to give it to you, would you be able, within 90 days, to resolve this?
No, I'm an over-road trucker. It'd be very difficult to resolve. The property has not been addressed for sale yet. You don't have a for-sale sign, was never given over a realtor. The property is a mess, okay? It's, he left it in other-
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not going to-
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. What I'm, what I'm saying is, if I would, if I would have voted for you to get it and nothing was going to get done, then we're not getting anywhere.
I, you know, I tend to believe that we should carry out the wishes of the deceased as much as possible, and I wouldn't be opposed to, to giving you 30 or 60 days to get this estate into line with all the necessary documentation. Seek out the advice that you need to help you complete that in a proper way. That's, that's sort of what I would lean towards if-
I would, I would, based on that, I would make a motion that all the necessary paperwork and everything will be filed within 60 days from today.
That's what I agree.
That this estate's small enough that the estate will be settled within six months of today. You, and that the executor will have the right to come back in if he needs an extension for some compelling reason beyond the six months to close this estate. And that the petition for removal will, will be held in abeyance, and if you fail to perform, we will not have to have another hearing. We will just roll it over to Mr. Carl Bice to do it.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on favor, signify if saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Do you understand what you have to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first thing you do, if you don't have that book or don't know what you did with it, go back downstairs and get another book and start reading what you have to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You can have my copy, just so you have that. Okay.
Tom Aiman, is he here? I'm listening, Diane.
What are we up to now?
It doesn't, no one is talking about public decisions.
I have homework to hand out for everyone to do.
Tom, I'm sure you'll take care of that.
Yes, I'm sure. I'm going to put that online.
You'll read that and write a summary for it?
Yes.
One-page summary?
I'll get that done in about half an hour. As long as I have a dictionary.
Is that all duplicate copy?
I really hope this is-
You went outside and you wore it up.
No, I think they're, I think that's one set.
Oh, one set of copies?
Oh, I thought you were kidding.
Oh, you've got to be kidding us. You don't expect us to comment on this, do you?
We're, yeah. Homework, it's homework. Now, you do have a Cliff Notes version, right? You know, the book that has the Cliff? Okay, the Cliff Notes version.
Well, let me remind you, Tom.
Which Tom?
Tom Aiman. Hey, Tom? I thought that's what we were paying you for.
Well, I believe-
To make these decisions.
This is the Cliff Notes version.
But since you all have to approve them, I thought you might at least have them in your possession.
Can we have a designated reader?
We just designated you as a designated. I'll make that motion right now.
Bill, we just wanted you to have some bedtime reading.
You sure that's enough? Thanks to me, I'm going to sleep. I'm sure that's enough.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Well, also, I'm glad this isn't city council, because you have to read it in city council. So you have to, you have to read the whole. That's why they don't do many translations.
Just that, just basically, I'm working on the next one.
I mean, that's why we're-
Well, that's what we've discussed. Well, that's what we discussed already. This is just the actual...
Final paper.
Yeah, this is the final paper that we've already discussed. This is just the actual...
Signature pages, I'm sure.
Yeah. Which I'm sure Tom's gonna give us a...
We'll have a week to go, we'll have a week to go through it.
So you've got one week to go through all this stuff. I'm gonna come back and...
Five minutes for best...
I'm gonna quiz you guys.
Maybe multiple choice.
Multiple choice.
Yes, multiple choice.
All right, well, we do have a summary that we're gonna go over.
Good, thank you.
Hopefully, the top document that you got there. And this is, this is an overview that covers the discussion of these documents and the transaction generally, where we are. Okay, I'll just start at the top. We'll go through this. The districts. You see the map, which is right there. That's, as you know, both districts are contiguous. They're, you know, they cover the same boundaries. You have a property tax district and a sales tax district. Property tax created in December of '12 by the county commission, and the excise tax in July of '13. Those were pursuant to orders that you all entered, and we went through that whole process over a year and a half of approving those applications and getting those districts in place. So they're in place and set up. Geographically, they cover 1,450 acres. Of course, near I-79 at both sides of 79, encompassing the existing university town center, and then the west side of the interstate is the undeveloped property that we've been calling it. As part of the applications for both districts, we have what I call a project plan, and that's basically an approved list of projects. So that's what the county is authorized to do with the property tax revenues and with the sales tax revenues within these districts. And those projects include, of course, a baseball park or a ballpark, a new interstate highway interchange, and a public infrastructure improvements project. So those are basically three distinct projects. And for this first phase that we're doing right now, we're actually, we're financing all three of those pursuant to various series of bonds, and I'll go through that with you. As far as authorization from the West Virginia Development Office and the legislative process for the excise tax district, the county has authorization to issue 45 million in the sales tax bonds, 20 million in the property tax bonds. So for these different series of bonds that we're issuing now, those are the limitations, well, those are the limitations that we have in place now for the district unless we go back and, you know, ask for modifications down the road. That's the bonding authority that we have. 45 million for the sales tax and 20 for the property tax. We've got here just a general description of the demographics of the county. You all, I'm sure, are familiar with most of that. As far as location to metropolitan areas, major interstate systems, unemployment rates, personal income, and then, of course, a reference to the authorization of the county to finance projects within the district. On the next page, we have a chart that lists all the various bond issues to finance the three projects that we talked about. Basically, I'm gonna call one the ballpark project, then the interchange project, and the infrastructure project. So those are the series of bonds that we're issuing to finance those three projects. We have the Series A bonds, which are excise tax bonds only, not property tax, for the ballpark. The sizing on that, based on, we have an agreement, the collaboration agreement with the university, that provides for up to 19,150,000 of project costs for the ballpark. Based on the whole, you know, the design-build process that WBU went through for the ballpark, that figure for the base contract, it actually came in below that, but there are other items such as for the scoreboard, the turf, all the other components of the ballpark that actually bring it in excess of the 19,150. But the county is financing just that portion of it. WBU has agreed to cover any costs above and beyond that. That series of bonds, of course, we went through an RFP process where different banks were invited to submit proposals to purchase those bonds. The most favorable proposal was submitted by United Bank, and they submitted a variable-rate proposal, which is based on LIBOR and a spread over LIBOR, LIBOR plus 1.95%. And it's a variable rate, but for the first five years, it has a floor of 2.5% and a cap of 4%. And after that, it's a fully variable, fully floating. But with respect to that series, of course, you'll recall that we have, WBU agrees to pay additional rents to make up any shortfall in available revenue, so in essence, they're assuming the risk of any, you know, fluctuations in that interest rate at that point, if it increases and spikes and there aren't sufficient excise tax revenues to make those payments. Maturity date, June 1, 2043. That's as far as we can go out, as authorized, you know, under the Act. And then, as far as from available revenues to start paying down those bonds, that would begin in 2017. So June 1, 2017, any revenues available after paying the scheduled interest would then start paying down the principal. And then, based on the projected revenues in the district for the excise tax, which is, you know, a model that's been put together by Piper Jaffray, based upon the projected development in the district, so, you know, future businesses that are going to, projected to locate in the district, and sales of those businesses, retail sales and services. The revenues that are projected to be generated would pay off the bonds in June 1, 2025. But those are just, that's just a model based on projections. We have no idea whether that will actually play out in that way or not. The B bonds, excise tax as well for the interchange, 21,830 at a 3.25% rate, same maturity date, same redemption start date, and that projected payoff would be 2026. And of course, those are being placed with DOH. They are the developer. They're also going to be the owner of the bond, and essentially, it's a reimbursement bond. So that DOH is going to pay the cost, of course, to build the interchange, I think under a design-build contract that they're going to bid out. So they're going to pay the construction costs and then submit requisitions to you all, which if approved, that would be the basis to reimburse them from payments on the bonds. The C bonds, again, for the interchange, 670,000 at a 6% rate, same maturity. Those would start, that's a smaller issue that we're trying to get paid off more quickly so that we can then focus the revenues on the A and B bonds, mostly, sorry, the B bonds, to then dedicate all the revenues toward repayment of that series because it's a larger issue. The projected payoff, I'll go into a little bit more detail, but surplus revenues would go toward repayment of these bonds before the interchange bonds in order to get them paid off. So they're projected to actually pay off in 2017. Mondview is buying those bonds, the developer. Then we have the two series of property tax bonds, one for the interchange, 9,605. So that's the estimated cost of the interchange is the combination of the 21,830 and the 9,605. So we want to maximize the cost being financed from the excise tax bonds because those are basically state dollars and minimize the local property tax dollars. So therefore, that's why you have a larger issue on the excise tax and a smaller on the property tax. Again, that same 3.25% rate, that's basically keyed off of a prime interest rate, a prime rate. Maturity, just statutorily, because the district was created sooner than the excise tax, we have a, we can't go out quite as far, so June 1, 2042. And the payoff would start at principal in 2017. Based on the projections that I discussed earlier, those are projected to pay off in 2025 if the development in the district proceeds as, you know, the developer thinks that it will. Those bonds placed with, again, with DOH. And then we have the last series, property tax for the infrastructure piece of the project, 4,515 at a 6% rate with that same maturity. Those would start paying off in 2016 and are projected to pay off in 2026, being placed with the developer Mondview. And then, just to talk about the three projects individually and how that relates to the bond issues. The ballpark bonds, you have the, you know, the 22,150 of excise tax bonds only. And pursuant to the agreement with WBU, as I mentioned, the county's maximum commitment on the project cost at this time is 9,150. Then the remaining proceeds of those bonds would be used to fund a debt service reserve fund. So if, you know, the revenues aren't sufficient to make a payment, there's a reserve available as sort of a backup, and then, of course, you have the additional rents from WBU as well. Capitalized interest, so you'll actually fund the payment of interest on the bonds while the project is being built, up to and go out one year beyond construction, so to pay the interest up to that point in time while the district is building out and that increment is being created, and then to pay the closing costs. Then you've got a description there of the ballpark project, you know, we're replacing the old 42-year-old field with all the amenities that you see there. And we've got a rendering of the project and a reference there to the New York Penn League making the decision to locate one of its franchises at the ballpark. The schedule is designed so that we can close on the bond issues now and have funding available for WBU to get started on the ballpark and for Mondview to get started on the infrastructure work. Those two pieces of the project are very much interlinked because, you know, there will be infrastructure that Mondview is putting in place with the bonds that are necessary for the ballpark. And then the ballpark, they need the ballpark to be open and ready for play in the spring of 2015, which is why, really, that we need to close on the bond issues for the infrastructure and the ballpark in order to have funding in place to get that construction started in probably February so that they can have the ballpark ready for play in spring of 15. Then the interchange piece of the project, we have the three series of bonds, the excise tax, two excise tax and one property tax. And there's no other costs involved in the two series being placed with DOH. Those are purely the construction costs. And that's based on the agreement with DOH that we put in, or that the county commit up to 31,435, 31,435,000 in costs to build the interchange. Then we have the infrastructure piece of the project, and that's the one series of bonds that's being placed with Mondview, and that would provide 4 million of project costs for construction of that infrastructure. And also proceeds to pay the closing costs for the bond issues. Then you'll see a, basically, a site plan of the layout of the available parcels that would be created by the road extension through the infrastructure project and the new interchange and the utilities that would be put in place for those additional sites, how that would lay out and where the ballpark would be located. Any questions so far? Okay. We're, we would like to close on the issue next Friday. So you see the, and sign the documentation on Thursday, so that'd be a pre-closing, so you see that closing date. All of these bonds are being privately placed with United Bank, Department of Highways, and the developer, so we don't have any public issues of these bonds. We don't have an offering document, you know, we don't have an official statement or anything like that. What we've got is, we have bond purchase agreements with the individual purchasers and investment letters where they indicate that they meet the requisite qualifications to be able to purchase the bonds in compliance with the securities laws. Denominations, you know, the, at least 100,000 and 1,000 increments in excess. You know, sometimes you can get a bond rating. We're not, this is not really necessary here because we're privately placing these bond issues, it's not a public offering. The structure is, as I mentioned, one, they're all term bonds, fully maturing on that last maturity date. So June 1, 2043 and June 1, 2042. And with surplus property tax and excise tax revenues that are available, that are projected to be available, after payment of scheduled interest and the administrative expenses of the districts, if there are surplus revenues available, that would be applied to start paying down the principal and the bonds. So that's why you get an earlier payoff from the scheduled maturity date. Does that make sense? Okay.
One thing's probably certain, I won't be here for the payoff, sir.
Well... There's a lot of advances in medicine and modern technology. You never know what's gonna be possible. We could have you sleeping in one of those capsules that Michael Jackson used to sleep in.
Chambers.
Chamber, yeah.
Well, you snuck it in.
That's right.
The question I have for you, with all the documentation, you're gonna be asking, what you gave us is the authorization resolution in order of the 45 million dollars for the excise. Do you, we also have to do the 20 million of the property tax?
It's all folded into that.
Oh, it's all folded in, oh, okay. That I didn't, okay, I thought this was just...
This order will approve the...
And this is what we're, yeah, this is the actual order.
That's the actual order. Well, I'm just, we're not gonna ask you to approve it today.
Oh, okay.
We're just, we're reviewing everything with you so that then you guys can go back and do your homework, and then we'll come back and ask you to approve it.
Take a test before you can make a motion next week, that's what he said.
Well, that's why I wanted to know what's the 20 million, because I was afraid it proved us 45 million and we were 20 million short.
Hopefully, we'll have a few sleepless nights to be able to get through this.
So the, so we have, you know, we have, we have a scheduled maturity date, we have scheduled interest payment dates, and those payments are due on those dates. To the extent that we have revenues available above and beyond what's necessary to make those payments, then we apply those once a year on June 1 to start paying down the principal of each series. It's basically how it's set up. It's a drawdown structure so that the county isn't paying interest on the full principal amount on all the series.
Right.
The proceeds are advanced as needed to pay costs, and interest only accrues on what's advanced.
Okay.
The scheduled interest payments are December 1 and June 1, starting June 1, 14. That mandatory redemption works, that's what I described as to the payoff from excess revenues. The county always has the option, under all the series, to pay them off at the par value with no premium or discount or, you know, there's no prepayment penalty on the bonds or premium. You can pay those off at par at any time. Additional bonds are generally, the county's going to be restricted to issuing additional bonds for... bonds for these districts without, you have to get the consent of the bondholders to issue additional bonds.
For this particular project? And for this, anything in this-
For anything in the district.
In the district, okay.
Yeah. And then those projected payoffs, again, that we went over, are based on a model that your placement agent has put together that, and working with the developer, where they have looked at projected development in the district and sales and property taxes that would be generated based off of that, therefore revenues available to pay the bonds, and then based on those revenues, when the bonds would pay off. Our team, we're, you know, the county's the issuer of all the bond series, Steph Tolan-Johnson is the bond counsel, we're counsel to the county, we're bond counsel to the county commission, and also your counsel for the, special project counsel for the projects. The placement agent is Piper Jaffray, Joe and Marie, who are here today. Their counsel is Spillman, Thomas &amp; Battle, which is Brian Helmick, who's also here. The master developer for the entire district is Monview, which is Jason Donahue, who's also here today. The ballpark developer, of course, is the university. They are entering into the design-build contract to build the ballpark. The interchange developer is DOH, they will enter into the design-build contract to build the interchange. You all are just providing the funding, or a portion of the funding. The infrastructure developer, of course, is Monview, also the master developer. The bond trustee is United Bank. Now, as far as the trustee, each series of bonds will have a trust indenture between the county and the bond trustee, and the trustee acts as a fiduciary on behalf of the bondholders. They basically administer the security for the bonds and make sure that the bondholders are protected through the transactions, that the payments are made when they're supposed to be made, that the funds are allocated in the manner, in the manner that they are supposed to. You all have used both West Banco and United in the past for different bond issues as trustee. I think in this case, I think you'd want to strongly consider using United Bank because-
They're buying the bond.
They are buying one series of the bonds, and also they are the trustee for the bond issues for the other sales tax district that is in place in West Virginia, and therefore are familiar with how those work. So that would, I think, be the recommendation in this case, and the bond order, if adopted, would approve United as the trustee, so if you all aren't comfortable with that, then if you'd let me know between now and next Wednesday. The security, I'll go over this just briefly. Each, there's a trust indenture for the ballpark bonds, that's the main document, the main security document is called a trust indenture, and those, copies of those are included in this packet. There will be a trust indenture for the ballpark, there will be a separate trust indenture for the interchange excise tax bonds, and then a third trust indenture for the proper, the two series of property tax bonds. The security for the ballpark, every month, the county will be required to requisition from the state auditor all the monies that are on deposit with the treasurer's office and the county's excise tax account. So the state tax department keeps track of what the increment is for the excise taxes. They provide that to the treasurer. The treasurer deposits that in a special account for this district, and your job will be to requisition whatever monies are in that account on a monthly basis and ask that that be sent to the bond trustee, either United or West Banco, for a split. 50% would go into the trust indenture for the ballpark bonds, 50% for the interchange bonds. So that's their security. United Bank has the, a pledge of 50% of the excise tax revenues to repay the ballpark bonds. There's also the agreement of WVU to pay additional rent if there's a shortfall. For the interchange, it's, it's solely the 50%, the other 50% of the excise tax revenues. Reserve fund, there is a reserve fund for the ballpark bonds equal to 12 months of interest at the 4% rate. So that would be the first fallback. If the, if the revenues aren't sufficient, they'd be paid, the scheduled interest payments would be paid from the reserve, and then WVU would pay an additional rent that would replenish the reserve. So there's sort of a backup to the backup. There's the reserve fund, WVU would pay additional rent that would go into a special account so that if the, if monies are withdrawn from the reserve, WVU would pay additional rent that would go into the additional rent fund. The reserve fund would, only if the reserve is fully drawn down and used to pay deficiencies, would monies move over from additional rent to then replenish the reserve fund. Does that make sense? So you have, the reserve fund is the first backup. If you have a, if the revenues aren't sufficient, you'd use the reserve to make the payments. Then WVU would pay an additional rent that would go into a special account equal to the amount withdrawn from the reserve. If the, if the reserve is fully drawn down, then you'd move the additional rent monies over into the reserve fund. The interchange, again, you have that trust indenture, and for the two series of interchange bonds, they have a pledge and lien on 50% of the excise tax revenues. The infrastructure bonds, they have also on, there's one, the one series of interchange bonds that is property tax bonds, every May 15th and November 15th, the county would send the monies that are on deposit in the TIF fund for the, there'll be one tax, have you guys set up that fund? I'm sure you've got that fund.
Kelly, has that been set up yet?
Yes.
Yeah, there's probably monies that are already being deposited in that fund.
There is.
So there's one TIF fund, property tax increment financing fund for the entire property tax district, and the sheriff, those, you know, the sheriff's office collects the regular property tax payments, and the assessor and the sheriff determine how much of that is increment. The sheriff's office sets aside in the TIF fund the increment, then you all on May 15th and November 15th send the increment to the trustee. Then there, there's one revenue fund that the trustee maintains, they then pay the debt service on the property tax bonds out of that revenue fund. So that's, that's all done on, on the basis of those trust indentures. That's the, that's the discussion, that's the description of the bond issues and the security in the projects. One thing also to mention, at the ti, WVU really needs, needs to have the ballpark open for play in the spring of 15. As I mentioned, the ballpark and the interchange, the infrastructure project are tied together because Monview needs to get that infrastructure in place for the ballpark, you know, there's roads, there's utilities that the ballpark needs in order to function. The interchange piece of it, they are going through their NEPA, it's a, it's a regulatory process that they have to go through for the interchange. They've already held one public hearing, which I understand the, the feedback was fairly positive for the project. They're, they're continuing through that process. They have a public hearing this evening, and then there's a 30-day comment period that follows that. So they have to complete that statutory NEPA process before they can get a final approval from Federal Highways. So in order to stay on schedule and get the infrastructure and the ballpark in place, to have that ready to be opened in the spring of 15, at the time of issuing the interchange bonds, you're going, you're going to be committed on the other two projects. So, you know, there's no, at the time of issuing all the bond series, you can't get, based on the regulatory process that DOH has to go through, a 100% commitment from them that the interchange will, will be built. Now, as far as hurdles and stumbling blocks that may create an issue for DOH, we've already been through the envi, and the environmental assessment process, the environmental assessment is one step in the process, that has been finalized and submitted to DOH, and I understand that they're satisfied with that. There's also the interchange justification report, and that's all part of this NEPA process. So they have to get through the public hearing this evening and then the 30-day comment period, and then if there's no significant comment that they deem that comes out of that, they've told the commission and everyone involved, they don't see any impediment at that point to moving forward with getting those final approvals from highways, federal highways. So, you know, I think our recommendation is to get through the public hearing this evening and see how that goes, and then get, have some dialogue with highways to see how they feel that that process went, and then the only thing left at that point would be the 30-day comment period, but we would be closing the bond issue before that period would have run its course. So there is some level of risk that the interchange wouldn't happen, but based on everything that we're hearing from highways, it appears that that risk is fairly minimal, and we'll be able to judge that better after the public hearing and how they feel about the comments from the public hearing.
Just to add to that, as Tom noted, because you did, I, along with Brian Helmick and Jason Donahue, met with the Department of Highways when we were there to specifically ask them this question that he raises. They are, they are totally committed to seeing this interchange going through. The, the risk that it's taking is that you can't necessarily promise what the federal government's going to do, and you can't necessarily promise that if this public hearing, someone comes out and says this is a haven for bald eagles. Now, they said a haven for bald commissioners don't count, but a haven for bald eagles So, so, you know, that, that, that's sort of an extreme situation, but based on everything to, to date, everything looks positive and moving forward. And as, as I've mentioned to them, you know, I, I take a risk every time I get my car and drive down here, so I don't see it as a major risk.
Right.
We will have a better feel after we attend the public hearing tonight if anyone does show up and, like I say, come up with some sort of objection. Yes, Ms. Rudolph?
What they can keep in mind, because they-
Sorry, Bill.
You're talking crap, you're not saying this is wrong, but the, the DOT actually stepping up and purchasing the bonds, the same Monview, the developer, and WVU's for the ballpark on it. They're basically doing that prior to the permit being done too, so they're going forward as if it's ready to go. So they're taking the same risk too, so they feel pretty confident that it's going to happen, it's just a matter of time.
I'll just briefly go over, since it's your major approval document, the bond authorizing resolution and order is the county's, will be the county's really final official action with respect to the issuance of the bonds and the initial financing of these projects, and I won't take up too much time going through it, I'll leave it with you to go through. But what it does is, you have a lot of recitals here, the whereas clauses that describe what got us up to where we are presently, the events that have transpired to date, and then, starting in section one, it's basically an approval, it's the county's approval for all of the different series of bonds and the terms of those bonds, as we've gone over, and I'll, we'll fill in the blanks here, the placement agent has been finalizing the numbers, we didn't want to put these in, the numbers in, until everything was set in stone, but I'll come back next week with a final order that has these blanks filled in with the numbers. But it's approving the issuance of the different series of bonds and the terms of those bonds in sections one and two, and section three, approving the granting of the security for the bonds, which is, you know, the excise tax revenues, the property tax revenues, the additional rent, the reserve fund for the ballpark bonds, that's section three, and it's, each different series of bonds have, has a separate subsection there. And then section four is basically that the county commission, this, this would not be an indebtedness of the county commission. This is a dedication of a special revenue source, it wouldn't constitute a debt or obligation of the commission for state law purposes. You're not obligated to, you know, levy any special taxes, to dedicate any of your general fund monies, any other revenue or funding source that the county has to these bonds, it's solely payable from those, those, the, the excise taxes and the property taxes. Then it approves, then you go, section five and most of these other sections is talking about the, the documents that are in your packet here. These are the main transaction documents, I went over the, you know, the basics of those, but the ballpark, it proves the, the ballpark indenture, the form of that and the signing of that by the president, the indenture for the interchange bonds, the property tax bonds indenture, the master development agreement, the ballpark development agreement, interchange development agreement, infrastructure development agreement, then all the purchase agreements for all the different series of bonds. And section 18 is approval of the ground lease with WVU, approval of the lease purchase agreement with WVU, and the, the use agreement for the ballpark. Just to go over briefly the ballpark piece of it, there's a, we've gone over this before, but just to reiterate, there, WVU has purchased and will continue to own the site of the ballpark. They will lease the, the site to the county under that ground lease. The county then will lease the site back to WVU, the county will own the ballpark improvements that are being financed from the issuance of the bonds. The county will lease those improvements to WVU. WVU agrees, under the lease purchase agreement, to pay additional rents in the event that the revenues are short to make the debt service payments on the bonds. WVU agrees to operate either itself or through the minor league team or some other manager to operate and maintain the ballpark. There, under state law, and I mentioned this before, WVU is basically required under state law to have a 30-day out on the lease purchase agreement, so they have to have the right to give you, the county commission, 30 days' notice and cancel the lease purchase agreement. At that point in time, that, that additional rent support would no longer be in place. The bonds would basically be strictly payable from the excise tax revenues. Now, we've negotiated some things with WVU and the lease purchase and the ground lease that gives the county some flexibility in the event that that were to occur, and you'll see that in, in both documents, but the county could either continue the ground lease under the same terms and conditions, which basically you're paying them $1 a year. So you could continue to lease the site, you already, you would already own the improvements. So the improvements you would, if they canceled the lease, removed the additional rent, you would continue to own the ballpark improvements that are financed from the bonds. Now, there may be some other things that they build out there that you may not own, but the basic components of the park you would own. And continue, you'd have the right to continue that ground lease until the bonds are paid off. So the, the thinking is that at that point, the county's no longer obligated on the bonds, and, you know, your commitment to the project, you will, the bonds will have paid off, the, the property would then revert, both the site and the improvements would go to WVU at that point. You would have the option to buy the property, the site, from WVU at basically their cost, their depreciated cost. So you could buy whatever they paid for the property, less depreciation, or any other improvements at, at the ballpark that you all would want, that you don't already own. So you own what you finance from the bonds. If there's something else that they build out, some kind of trade- If there's something else that they build out, some kind of training facility or something that's located on the site, you'd have the option to buy it at their depreciated cost if you'd want to do that.
Let me ask you a question. If we, and I guess this is all hypothetical, and I know sometimes necessary discussion in likelihood is very highly unlikely that it'll happen, but suppose that we would get into that situation and the monies that have already been paid by WVU, if, you know, their leadership would decide 10 years from now that, well, we don't want this ballpark anymore and we want out of the lease agreement.
Right.
So everything that they've paid up to that date is just forfeited. Am I correct?
Yeah. They have, while the bonds are in place and while the lease is in place, to the extent that the revenues are available above and beyond what's necessary to pay the debt service, before starting to repay those bonds, the principal, they would be reimbursed their additional rent. But after, you know, after the bonds are repaid, then, you know, there's no further obligation at that point.
Okay.
The other option would be, the county could terminate the ground lease if you decide at that point that you don't want to have responsibility for operation and maintenance of the ballpark. You own it, right? But you don't want to bear the cost, and you guys may not even be around, but somebody will be sitting in those chairs. You guys don't want
Thought I was going to be the captain.
If you guys don't, if the commission doesn't want to bear the cost of operating or liability of operating and maintaining the ballpark, you would have the option at that point to cancel the ground lease and ownership of the site and all the ballpark improvements would revert to WVU at that point.
Okay.
So that's as much flexibility as I can think of to give you guys. You can either continue the ground lease, you can have the option to buy the site and the other improvements, or terminate the ground lease and put ownership of everything back onto the university. That's all that I have for you.
Okay.
That's all?
Is that it? Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll be meeting next week to get these signed, everything that needs to be signed, you'll present next week.
We will present the, I will leave these packets with you. I will bring back with me to the meeting next week the updated order with the blanks filled in. Ask you all to, assuming that with the public hearing process with DOH that everyone's comfortable, we'd ask you to adopt the bond order. The document signing would actually take place the following day at our offices, where we would sign all the documents.
Okay.
So we wouldn't ask you to sign.
That means Bill.
That means Bill, you'd have to come to our office.
Congratulations, Bill.
So we would, we would need, we would need Bill at next Thursday at 10 o'clock at our offices, assuming everything happens as it should in Morton, here in Morton Town, over in the
That's after our next Wednesday's meeting, correct?
That's Thursday, Thursday morning.
How early?
10 o'clock.
Okay, I can make that.
The 23rd.
Providing I get some sleep that night and don't read this.
No, this will put you to sleep.
We need three things from the commission that day, like the pre-closing.
Okay.
We need Commissioner Bartolo there at our offices at 10 o'clock. We would need the county clerk, and we need the commission seat.
The clerk we have, she loses herself.
Yeah, she has the, she has the commission seat on it, yeah. She always brings that to the closing. So if all goes well, that's the plan. And then we would fund the purchase of the, you know, the initial draw of the bonds then the following day. That would be, that would be the official closing day.
So do they need to be at the official closing on the 24th?
No.
Okay. Is that it, Tom?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you guys need me for anything else?
You can hang around here.
Yeah, I'd like you to stay, yeah.
You got my message, right?
I did. For the work session?
Yeah, no, for, for
No.
Okay, regular meeting? Okay, all right, I'll just be outside.
Great, thanks, Tom.
Correspondents, Diane.
I have no, I don't have any.
Have none?
No.
Unfinished business, discussion to engage bond counsel for financing of Justice Center.
I want to go get my books.
You need Tom to stay here?
Yeah, well, Tom, yeah, he made you stay.
Do you want all this? I'm going to give Janet my set of these papers.
Oh, you want to give her these?
No, that's yours.
What the, oh, he's getting his books.
Yes.
Yes. Who wants to lead this off?
Well, I, I guess I'm rather confused about some things, based on some emails that were transpired. I don't know where Diane is right now. And I probably need some more clarification. One of the, I don't know where Bobby Doyle is right now either. No, okay.
In fact, is it, do we have both representatives here?
Yes.
Okay, just so I make sure.
Maybe we ought to acknowledge, oh, did they leave from Piper Jaffray? No, they're still here.
Okay.
Basically, you know, I understand how to compare this stuff. And, you know, I'm no, I'm no expert in this by all means, but I certainly understand how money moves. And one of the big concerns that I had, and this is from early on, from all the RFPs we got, was that the money, that was one of the things we talked about, the money be available as we needed it, and be available quickly, and we only get charged for what we need when we need it. We don't pay extra. My comparison of what we went through was looking at a dollar-to-dollar cost. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but one of the things that was mentioned in that email was, look at the rates, look at the rates. Well, I understand you look at the rates, look at the rates, but if you're going to look at the rates, then there was also mentioned in the email what I call bait and switch. Say, we'll give you rates, but then we're gonna, we're gonna raise your rates. Two weeks later, by saying, oh, well, our market's different. I don't do business that way. I don't do my personal business that way. So I'm certainly not going to do that business that way with taxpayers' dollars. I want to know what the rates are going to be and what it's going to cost me if we act quickly on it. Now, I understand there's some level of flexibility, but if, if a, if a professional in this field is off by 25 basis points, then I don't think they're competent to do the job. I can't see how you could be off by that much unless there's some major economic collapse. So when all these issues jumped up, and quite frankly, the overall cost was within, what, $500, I calculated? When you looked at the different rates and all the different things, the overall cost, and I've said from the beginning, all I care about is how much money I get and how much money I have to pay back. That includes setting it up, paying it off, however, the total package costs. That's all I, that's why I do my own business. That's what I care about. How much money I get, and after it's all said and done, every penny that I had to get that money and pay it back. The big selling point with Piper Jaffray to me was a question by Bobby Doyle during one of the initial interviews, was how quickly could we get the money? My recollection to the response from Piper Jaffray was that you're a large company, and as a large company, you have assets, you have a lot of assets, that within 60 to 90 days, you could fund this project yourself if need be. That was a deciding factor to me, because Cruz didn't have that same answer. I am now advised by Mr. Doyle that Piper Jaffray says, no, they wouldn't do that. They gotta, they gotta put all the ball, the 95% of the bonds out before any money would be coming forward. Well, here I'm left then. What am I guaranteed? Do I have any guarantees whatsoever? Do I have any promises whatsoever? I mean, Argenta could give us the money in 48 hours, because they're buying it all. They can write a check in 48 hours. Now, I understand, and based on advice from Mr. Amon, as to the downsides of that, and we decided not to go that route. And I understand, that's not what I'm talking about. We had guarantees with Argenta though. And right now, I'm at a total, total loss as to whether I would be happy with either one of these companies. I really am. So people that know me know I'm straightforward and honest, I don't hold anything back, I tell you the way it is, but that's my gut feeling right now, that I am just totally uncomfortable on voting on either one of these.
What I'd like to do is give Tom an opportunity, and then we have representatives here of the one bond counsel. Oh, both are here. Oh, okay. And give them an opportunity to comment if
For clarification.
If there's no objection.
Yes, I would like that, yes, sir.
First of all, I come from a little different point of view. I would say I'm very comfortable with either of the two companies doing the job. My question is, which one do I want to work with? And again, it's more of a personal decision, because when we went through the whole process, and please understand, we broke it down very clearly, and to us, a wash right now from what we're seeing of $500 and a $18 million bond is, you know, is, it's a wash, so there really isn't. So that, now we have to come back. Where my confusion was, and what we thought we were trying to get, was a table that just said A, B, C, D, E, F, A, B, C, D, F, and we were going to compare the two. You all did that in your own way, so therefore, that's where the confusion was, because we were trying to, again, compare apples with oranges. That's why you're seeing the hesitation where the concern was. I wrote a letter, an email last night to the two county commissioners, asking, was I allowed to ask you, if it was actually Cruz, a question? And I didn't ask you, so I wanted very clear. You never heard from me, because I wanted to be public, because Eldon made it very clear, if I asked you the question, then I need to tell you what the question was. So I'd rather do it in a public forum, because, you know, I didn't want to get in trouble. I'm good at getting in trouble, but I didn't want to do it this way. My first question for clarification, for Cruz, you're, the amount debt service, you gave us a specific amount, $1,378,000, say, non-bank qualified rated issue. Okay, my question, it's just a basic, simple one. Say, we either refinance somewhere or the rates changed, would that change, or is that mandated for throughout the bond? You see what I'm saying? Would that fluctuate? And I didn't know how to answer that, so I'm going to ask, if you don't mind. I need to answer that question.
Well, that debt service amount is, will stay the same unless and until you're able to call bonds, pay off bonds, refinance. And the earlier call that you can secure will allow you
Excuse me, I should have asked you to state your name.
Oh, I apologize.
For the record, please.
Rob Steftow with Cruz and Associates. And so, an earlier call, depending on when the call is, you'll be able to call in bonds, redeem bonds, and secure a lower interest rate, and then therefore you'll have a lower debt service level.
Okay, so my question is, with you asking that, then I come to you, because you were saying there was a fluctuation.
Absolutely.
Okay, and if you would explain, because that's where my clarification, if you say your name and address.
I said Piper Jaffray, and we presented, I said Piper Jaffray, and I think Tom Amon as bond counsel could chime in, but interest rates on your bonds would not be set until you actually sell the bonds that you're going to offer.
Right, just when we went through.
Okay, and the rates are established on the date of that sale. And so, Eldon, there wouldn't be fluctuations between now and the sale date related to, is the market in your favor, or is the market, you know, against you based on how rates go up and down? And the rates that are provided are, you know, they're tied to well-known indices to a certain extent, related to where that rate may go, up or down, depending on where the market conditions are and the rating of your bonds are, et cetera. You've got a lot of process that you're going to have to go through regardless of whether you go to a bank or you go to us, that requires municipal building commission, sorry, the county, county building commission, and as well as your own authorization. You're going to have to go through that before anybody could sell bonds or even commit to, you know, at least for us, commit to sell the bonds and establish the rates at that time. There's still work to be done on that, on that schedule. But we want to be clear that we have, we have capital, plenty of capital as a larger firm, that when the sale date comes, to the extent that there are unsold portions of the bonds, historically, we have stepped up to the plate and take those down into inventory and work those off. And our statutory limit is very high, much higher than the $18 million required to sell the debt. But if in any way, through our presentation, you know, there was some confusion about whether we're committing to a rate that day in the sale of the bonds, I think, I thought we were pretty clear in terms of letting you all know.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying was brought up in the email, and I understand, I understand the change from the time, the presentation, the timing, I understand all that. But barring some economic catastrophe, you should, there's no way you should be off by 25, 50, or more basis points. There's no way.
From the initial proposal back in April?
No, no. From the proposal today, from the last proposal that we were ready to vote on today until all this came up. I just don't, I don't see it. Now, maybe I'm wrong, like I say, I'm no professional in this, and that's why I asked Tom here, because he could address that too, but I just, I just believe, I mean, if that's a question, that it could be another quarter percent, or half percent, or a whole percentage point off from what's in the proposals, and $18 million over all those years, that's a heck of a lot of tax dollars.
Absolutely.
So that's what concerned me. Yes?
To add to Joe's point, we have, we are adequately capitalized to take in all bonds that are unsold as well, same as Piper. The interest cost that we quoted in our final proposal, what we're saying essentially is, assuming the usual few basis point market movement, we're still going to be able to come in right around that number. So what I'm saying is, the county would be, would do well to make sure that, at the time of the sale period, check back to see where you are compared to what the winning offer is, just to make sure that you're not creating an additional fee, interest cost fee, or interest rate fee, on top of what's there already in the underwriter's discount.
I agree, I agree with that. And I just want to make a blurb to whoever's picked, that I intend to do that.
And that's all any of us have asked.
Anyone knows I will not keep my mouth shut.
It is customary to do pricing books during the pricing period and after, that kind of show, well, where are comparable credits in the market?
Good.
In the United States. I mean, all three of ours, reputation, and our firm's reputation in terms of making, we're not here to do one bond deal, we are in the market. We are in the market, go firm three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Again, both have very good track records with pricing bonds. I mean, ultimately, there's an industry standard for your credit. And the real question is, you know, when you price your bonds, you know, how do your bonds price relative to other credits? And we believe that because of the lack of West Virginia paper and the strength of bond council, it's just a great story that you should, you know, be able to do very well in the market. But the market changes every day. And there, and when you say twenty-five basis points, for instance, I guess, you know, is it twenty-five basis points in a day or a week? Usually, usually not. But, you know, from month to month, you can see depending on various types of economic turmoil, various types of news that may come out nationally.
I guess the question, the question is that is it going to be twenty-five basis points from the time we issue this, we pass this motion and the time of issue, which goes back to how quickly can we get this done? I mean, it's all interrelated.
That's bond counsel. He's driving the process.
All right, well, that's why I asked you here. But before we shift to the legal council, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Commissioner Bloom has asked this question repeatedly and I've given him poor answers. So, I would like each of you to answer the question. And that question is, do we want the bond rates to be high or we want the bond rates to be low?
We want to be as low as possible.
The interest rate? The interest rate or credit rating?
Credit, which is high.
We want high credit rating, low interest rate.
Let Mr. Bloom ask his question.
So, go with both. Go with the interest rate first. Okay, because here's what you have. You have a four-point, say, four-six interest rate with Cruz. And then I have a question here. You have a four-point-three-two-eight or a four-point-three-nine-two. One's the true interest cost, one's the all-interest cost. Which is that compared to the four-point-four-six that Cruz? That's why I'm confused.
Here's the thing, you know, we provide the all-inclusive cost because if you were to go to a bank, okay, you'd have fewer costs. And your effective rate, you know, maybe outside of bond counsel, you'd have smaller costs. And the all-inclusive cost, the reason we like to provide that is kind of truth interest rate. It says that maybe the interest rate on the amount you borrow is this rate is lower. But the real rate, the all-inclusive cost, what it's costing you, Eldon.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's the effective rate.
If I could cut you off because, okay, so we have a four-point-three-nine-two and we have a four-point-four-six as what is provided. Now, do you want to explain that first and each one can explain it, then we'll go to the other side?
Yeah, I would say exactly what Joe said. One is the, the average coupon is what you're going to pay in interest. But the NIC or in some cases the TIC is the all-in rate or as Joe said, the true interest cost. But it doesn't, in order to be able to set benchmarks, use either one. And look at what's, what is stated, what is quoted at the bid stage and see what it is at the sale period to know whether the county's getting a good deal or not. All I'm saying is, our firm, we don't need to go out of the state to take this down and place it efficiently. The rates we're giving, the benchmarks, they're going to come in around there, as I said, assuming usual market fluctuation. And what you can do there is, for comparison purposes, account for whatever those movements are and offset that out of the interest cost that you get at the sale period. Compared to whatever, whatever was stated to win.
So, we got the part of the.
The all-inclusive cost includes cost.
And that's fine. Okay, so now I understand that. So, you want the lower.
The TIC and NIC is the borrowing cost on the bonds. Okay, so you can't compare that with an all-inclusive cost. I just want to make sure you know.
Okay, now there's a second part as he said. There is the interest rate in the second part you said was the. The credit. Can you answer, since you answered your, could you answer? I'm trying to be as fair as possible.
We think this, you know, we think this is going to get a nice, a high A category rating on this bond issued based on the strength of the county, other deals that have been done in the state. We think by getting that rating and the fact that the bonds are not bank qualified, which means that banks can't write off the carrying cost locally, which if this was bank qualified, we would approach our marketing effort and everything completely different. But the bottom line is that once you get that nice rating from the rating agency, you open up the universe of potential buyers and investors to thousands, not just a hundred locally. The emphasis always is, first, make sure that you have as much local participation as possible. And those usually happen in the earlier years or maturities, those first ten years where people want to hold debt for about that long. But we also want to make sure that where you pay most of your interest, where most of the bonds are actually paid back in the latter years, that you're getting as much participation from potential institutional investors as possible. And, you know, Piper is a top-rate firm in those particular areas, being like sub-ten, sub-twenty million dollar credits in our ability to market those bonds. So, that is, to answer your question, a high rating is very, very important here. The higher the rating, the spread off that bond index we told you about is tighter. And the other question would be, I guess, on your interest rate, it's going to result in a lower interest rate.
Okay, good. I'm starting to.
Now, both firms have got a long history of marketing bonds, you know, nationally. And we've been doing a lot in West Virginia, Piper Jeffrey over the last two years. So, you know, their bond desk and our bond desk at Wright D. Skells, you know, are, usually they start with a national kind of municipal index. And then from there, I think as Rob had talked about, you know, maybe slight different approaches in terms of how we may go after a rating or how we may market a particular bond. But, you know, what you're going to find in essence is the results of your deal, you're going to be able to compare back to an index and kind of look at, how did I do relative to, say, in credit in Pennsylvania?
Okay, so in our discussion, you know, I want it very clear. I mean, the three of us were really trying to differentiate between the two of you. And again, I want to say, I mean, it's really like splitting hairs right now because you're both in agreement, you're both competent firms. So, we're trying to figure out what is it that separates them. The one kind of difference for me is that Cruz is considered, has an office here and a locally. Now, where I'm a little confused and he says that he can do the bonds in West Virginia. My question is, does it matter where you do the bonds? And you both can answer this. If it's basically going to be the same amount? It doesn't matter if it's, you know, is it John Smith from Charleston, West Virginia or John Smith from Texas? If it's the same price? So, I want to throw that out before, not let you answer because you're the one who brought that up. I'll let you answer first.
I apologize for. We are located in Charleston, West Virginia. And we have been here, Maria's been in the industry for.
Since nineteen eighty-four.
We have made a living.
Probably before this guy started calling.
In nineteen ninety-eight, you know, I've been doing municipal bond work exclusively in West Virginia since ninety-eight, both of us have. So, we're, we are one-hundred percent two bankers that all we do is West Virginia paper. And that's all we have done throughout our careers. So, let's just dispel that right away because we both have offices here. And secondly, bonds aren't underwrote or sold out of our offices. You know, they, they, they work with the bankers. The bankers work hand in hand with the underwriting desk. And in our case, it's located in Minneapolis. And they'll tell you in their case where they're located. Work hand in hand with their bankers to get that credit as strong as possible. Make sure that when we structure it, it's got the broadest possible appeal in terms of investor interest. And then we provide a cost and feedback related to, you know, West Virginia because we're right here in touch. I mean, that's, we talked about that last transaction that we're working on, you know. Relationships with local banks are really important to us and local investors. And that all ties together between your local presence and where the bonds are actually priced. And they're going to be priced off at desks as tied into bond markets all day long. I mean, rates are moving by the minute. And that index is moving by the minute. You just have to have confidence that you've got the right balance in our opinion. West Virginia, you know, and that kind of strong natural access to, you're going to get the best possible pricing of your bonds.
Well, may I comment right there because that's, that's my key. There is no doubt based on the strength of this county that we could not and should not qualify the best possible rate that exists out there. There's none, none in my mind whatsoever. You're going to say, well, we've got to get a rating. Well, I know you've got to get a rating. I know that we should get the best possible rate that anyone can qualify for based on the strength of our financials.
And I think that one of the, one of the pluses that we have, we have a lot of experience with the rating agencies. In fact, when we did one of the first lease deals for the state, we got it, we got it rated for them. So, I think it's going to be real important that you be presented correctly to the rating agencies. Now, they look at factors that none of us can guarantee. I can't guarantee a rating. Cruz can't guarantee a rating. But I can guarantee you that we'll do our best effort to present the county the best light and prepare all that information for the rating agencies.
Do you want to respond quickly? Because that's why I'm trying to differentiate.
So, all right, and Piper is a wonderful firm nationally, internationally, without question. And even their presence here in West Virginia. The first thing I'd say is yes, we are, our offices and our commitment are right here in Morgantown in Mon County. Have been so for probably seven or eight years. What I would say is yes, absolutely, just like Marie said, we can help you get rated. We can, we can cover that. We have rating experience as well, just like Piper. Another thing, the terms of the loan are very important. As an issuer, as a borrower, you want to secure the earliest call date you can get a hold of. Because that gives you the flexibility to refinance into lower interest rates. I don't know that you can, you know, we're offering a five-year call. I don't know if they can match that or not in what they're saying. But what we're telling you is, these are what we can provide. We have an in-state direct marketing distribution. So, we can, we can cover the risk of in the event the county doesn't get the rating that they want to get, we can still underwrite this efficiently right here in West Virginia with West Virginia investors at the efficient interest rates and those flexible terms, the early payoff. And I would just say, we also, as I said before, we're adequately capitalized. We're more than adequately capitalized. We can place this efficiently.
One final, yeah, one final question and this is the final. You do not require us to have money put aside like a reserve fund, you know, okay. You're, in your first bid, you did, but now in this final bid, you don't. Is that not?
That's correct.
Okay, so I want to get that clear. So, that was changed. That was a major change in your bid.
That's right. There's no debt service refund, no debt service reserve fund requirement in any scenario, rated or unrated.
Right, both here are equal. So, you see why we're having the problem because it's so accurate.
Now, that's due to the lease. And if you understand leases, as you all know, it's subject to annual appropriation. You're either going to make that payment or you're not. That's what makes it a strong credit here. You know, and we want to just say again that that rating you go for, I mean, I think the rating consideration is really a big deal here. This isn't a one-shot deal for the county. The county's growing, your needs are going to be growing. If you're able to have the option of accessing capital markets at any time that you might need to do it and you have a good rating that's floating out there, then this, this is a kind of a first series of potentially other series to follow that, you know, this, this is why we think it's so important. It's an area that we really pride ourselves in, so.
Okay, let me, we need to move on with this meeting.
And then the underwriters discounts, the only other thing we wanted to bring up, which is,
I don't know where the, the underwriters discount is firm for us.
Yes.
And I don't know, I can't believe that they're exactly the same, but maybe they are.
We have last comment.
Okay, my last comment is, as Commissioner Callen said, you have, you control this entire process. Even the selection you make today, you do not, you do not lose control until you sign a bond purchase agreement. So, before, before, before whatever firm goes into the market, you can ask for updated pre-sale numbers and see where the market's at and compare those and understand. And obviously, their reputation, our reputation, it all depends on shooting absolutely straight with you all on that.
Okay, thank you.
One, one final question.
Sure, go ahead.
Just, will either one of you upfront any of the money before ninety-five percent of the bonds are sold?
Well, first of all, Tom needs to answer the schedule. The problem is, legally, what can be done without any, currently, you don't have your bond orders, your authorizations that are in place, you know, until you.
So, the answer is no. I'm looking for a yes or no answer.
Until they go to market. When you go to market, that's correct.
Wrong.
That's correct. We.
So, the answer is no.
That's correct.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Well, thank you both. What I'd like to do is, Tom, to give you a chance to comment on, you've heard everything. Any comments or recommendations to this commissioner?
That's it.
Another question.
In a, in a brief period of time, can you give us that?
I guess I could only say two things. You know, going forward from here, it's, for both firms, as far as the interest rate, it's going, and the rating, oh, well, the interest rate mostly. It's going to be dependent on the market, market conditions on the sale date. Neither one of them can control that. I imagine probably the spread that they're going to have of the interest rate over the index that they were referring to is probably going to be fairly similar. So, the ultimate rate is going to depend mostly on the market at the, at the sale date. As far as the timing, it's mostly a legal process. The county has to go through an ordinance process, which is a two-meeting process. The building commission has to go through a two-meeting process. It's mostly about document preparation at this point as far as timing. I mean, bond counsel has to sit down and we are not able, once we know the structure of the transaction from the banker. So, in other words, you know, we couldn't sit down and start drafting documents until you selected the funding source that you wanted to go with. And we're still really kind of at that point. So, once you decide on either Cruz or Piper, then we know how to prepare our documents. And the most time-consuming part of this going forward is getting the documents prepared. And also the approval process for the building commission and the county. So, as far as the actual sale of the bonds, I mean, either Cruz or Piper could go out tomorrow and sell bonds if we were through the public approval process and all the documents were ready. So, it's mostly from the timing standpoint, it's more of a legal process than it is a banking process at this point in time. So, as far as you all and trying to get, you know, get the process moving forward as quickly as you can with construction, you know, I would recommend, you know, my legal recommendation is that you not sign a construction contract or bind yourself with a contractor until you have all the funding in place to complete construction. I mean, that's what I always recommend to my clients. Anytime you go out and sign a, sign a construction contract, when you don't have all the funding firmly committed and in place, you're assuming the risk that all the funding won't be in place. You won't have sufficient monies to pay the costs. Now, the discussions we had.
We have sixty days left though. And our number is only good for another sixty?
Ninety to a week.
Ninety days from the time they submitted it. Hasn't that been, what, four weeks, three weeks?
We've got, we've got to roughly May fifteenth, March fifteenth. Okay, that's, that's what the bid hold. I think you have a nine, from what Tom Potts is, Tom Potts is telling me we got to roughly March fifteenth.
If I hear you correctly, what you're saying is that both of the firms are equally competent.
We, I have worked with both.
And what I also hear you saying is, don't commit to obligating funds until we're sure we have the funds. And I also hear you saying that we need to do that as soon as possible to expedite this matter.
As far as selecting the banker, yes.
And I don't hear you saying which one you would recommend.
I can't, I can't, I work a lot with both of them and I, they both have many fine qualities. And I, I'm not, I'm not going to make a recommendation as to either one. I like both firms. They're both very good firms.
Okay, thank you, John.
Let me, let me ask you one other question. Is there anything that you perceive based on the legal requirements and everything else that would prevent us from making that March fifteenth date?
No, if, I think that date can be met. It's very aggressive, but it can be done. The biggest, the biggest, the biggest part of the thing is we have to get the documents in place and get the public approval process. I don't, I don't know where they're, the rating, it's going to, you know, we have to get this submitted to the rating agency as quickly as we can because it will take them some time to evaluate the credit and give you all rating.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. Can anything be done before, before the two, two meetings here, the two meetings of the building commission? Can anything be done? done before? That's my question.
I think the only thing you can do at this point is pick a banker.
That's the first thing. Okay.
Then they can move.
You're still not answering my question. My question is, is there anything that a banker could do without those things? Once we've selected the banker, can they seek to get a rating before we go through the notice process and everything?
No. The process from here is that we have to, we have to prepare a trust indenture and the lease agreement. We have to make sure that the building commission is all in good order. So we're starting discussions with Keith, and I think Diane, you got, you got those things. Do you have a packet, maybe, of some things I could take with me, appointments and things like that? It's about preparing the documents and getting the approval, public approval process completed, so that, they need that to then send their packet to the rating agency and get that started. I mean, is that fair to say?
No. Actually, once you've established the dates, and you all have taken initial action in your first meeting, documents can be drafted, once you hire a banker with your legal ticket, as you're establishing those approval date processes. And there's no reason that if the county, as it's getting ready to hold its first of two meetings, and the building commission is a law.
Amazing.
That you can't proceed forward with, you know, submitting information to a rating agency to start your.
So you're saying you could, get some of the stuff moving?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Because that's what's got me concerned, is if, if we're looking at a March 15th, we need to decide now whether we're going to have to ask for an extension on that contract bid. Because we're looking at March 15th, and the question is, is the March 15th when we first issue the bonds? I mean, is that one, is that date looking at? And then we got to wait till 95% are sold? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
We did a schedule that could show that if, if Steptown Johnson were to kind of move forward with the indenture, the trust, lease agreement, get those drafted, that with our council doing an offer and a document, that it is, it is possible actually to get the bonds sold in February, and to actually, once they're sold, that's the rate is locked, and close those bonds shortly thereafter. We think there's enough room, looking at that in the 18 schedule, to actually get the bonds rated, sold, and closed. But again, a large part of this is governmental approval process, which is really only the timeline.
But you're saying you could start some of this, so you have to do like the ratings and stuff before all the government? And that was my question I was trying to ask.
And that's exactly.
Rob, I wonder, like, you have a right to answer to it.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
March, March.
March 13th. I think we had, like, March 13th as the closing day.
We can absolutely match that, assuming no big hiccups in the authorizing public approval process. We can.
No, I understand that. I'm just, I know that, what we talked about even, because we have, we have funds available to go ahead and do an initial contract with them, because we could pay some initial upfront cost from our own proceeds. Now, I understand why you don't recommend doing that. But, I mean, if we're going, if we're going to move ahead, we need to move ahead.
Can there be a reimbursement resolution, Tom?
We've already done, we've already done a reimbursement resolution. Well, I, I've got all, my question answered. My problem is, is that, I thought, I thought, I thought I had, well, I thought I had a deciding point that now no longer exists. Now it's like eight heads or tails.
Let me just make one comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, I understand it seems like there were some questions about the proposals, and it seems like those have been aired and answered. It seems like we have two equally competent sources here. And if I recollect correctly, until these issues came up, we had sort of made a decision of Piper Jaffe. So I think the real question is, has, has the questions that came up been answered fully to your satisfaction? And do we just proceed with what decision we'd made previously? Or now are we going to jump ship and make a new decision? The one thing I will say is, you know, I, I certainly don't qualify myself as an expert with these issues. And we have to rely upon other sources and the experts. I'm familiar with Piper Jaffe's track record. They've done work in, for the county before. I'm not familiar with Cruz. But I can't make a motion. I think we do need to make a motion. We do need to get this issue resolved and move on, and get this project underway. So I would open it up to either one of you.
I guess selling the federal building is out of the question, aren't you?
Just pointing.
Hey, I'm all for that.
I'm just kidding. You got to put some levity in this stuff.
That's right.
Tom?
Well, I mean, as I said before, and I think I'm even more clarified, I mean, I will go with wherever the two votes go, in the majority. However, the deciding factor for me, and I said it before, was I felt more comfortable with Cruz, because they have chosen, for whatever reason, to have their offices in Montague County, and I feel comfortable working with them. And I had worked with them years ago with the Public Safety Building with the city of Morgantown. Piper Jaffrey's, I feel, I mean, I guess, I'm the kind of guy who's like, they got the base, they got the Tiff district. I like to equalize, and I think it could help West Virginia. So I'm comfortable, and I would like to go with Cruz, but I'm not going to fight, I mean, because either one's going to be excellent.
Well, we can't do anything unless we get a motion.
Right.
I mean, is there a motion on the floor? Does anyone want to put a motion on the floor to recommend which bond counsel here?
Underwriting firm.
Underwriting firm. I will move that we go with Cruz for the underwriting firm.
I have a motion on the floor to go with Cruz. Is there a second? I call again for a second to the motion.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I dissent. I would recommend Piper Jaffe, based upon prior history. That having been said, and the motion passes two to one, and the matter is resolved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Congratulations.
It was a, it was a tou, it was a tough call, but I, Tom, since it was so exact.
Yes.
Tom's appeal to sort of spread it around, I decided to go with that.
Okay.
Okay. We're, we're ready to move on, right?
Oh, I want?
Yeah. Letter of support to Army Corps of Engineers for Forest Popular Area.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you for staying, Tom.
This is a draft. For your consideration, if you approve it, I'll sign it. The Army Corps of Engineers is asking for their assistance in the flooding problem in the force.
The only thing, I read that correspondence, and I thought it was sort of misleading that we are obligating ourselves to pay for $500 and some thousand dollars to correct this project. I don't think.
That's what Muggs said, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think we've ever obligated this commission to pay $500 and some thousand dollars for this project. I think there needs to be more discussion on that. I think, I'm the same problem with us supporting the correction of that, and I think it's absolutely necessary it needs corrected. It's just that I don't agree that the county taxpayers should pay an excess of a half a million dollars to correct it. I think that's going to set bad precedent.
Work session next week.
Okay.
Tim Ball is coming.
All right.
This is to ask for assistance of the Army Corps of Engineers to provide sandbags, emergency assistance. It has to come from the local government. I think last week in work session, you asked me to prepare this.
Yeah, I'll move the letter to be approved.
Okay. I have a motion for the letter to be approved.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Then we have the Federal Energy Regulation, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Regarding hydropower application. Now, I do want to mention that City of Morgantown is having a special meeting. And I, and it might be good advice for us to wait until we see what the outcome of that is and the settlement. But I think it's, it's good as a community that we be united in this.
The, yeah. And I don't think we're necessarily, the only problem is, all comments have to be submitted by January 21st.
Oh, does it?
That's Monday. This was sort of a non-committal position. I understand, and regardless of what some people say, all the locks, Opocusco, Hildebrand, they're all in Montague County. None of them are in Marion County. They're all in Montague County. But we, what we talked about, and basically what this letter says, that we are generally in support of hydropower projects. However, we have some concerns with the Morgantown and the Point Marion, because of the plans as they're laid out, could adversely affect the land along the Wharf District, the rail to trails. And that's basically what all this letter says. We have concerns about some of them, but we support hydropower generally.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd say move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. New business. Any new business? Reports from the county commissioner. Let me start off, if you'll let me.
Certainly.
Is that, and I want to defer to Diane here to comment about, we got invited to a luncheon by WVU President Gordon Gee. And with that, I'll let you make the call.
It was very interesting, meeting Dr. Gee, Jeff McCorskey was there from the city, the city manager, and Commissioner Bartolo and I. We, he was open to suggestions that we had, and trying to develop a relationship between the university and the county and the city, what he can do for us. He offered to give us his cell number, if we needed to reach him for any reason. He's trying to catch up with Montague County and the city to see just what's going on, what needs to be done. Couple of issues that we brought up were the fact that the university is buying property and it's disappearing from the tax laws. He was concerned about that. We also talked about adding an emergency services fee to the students' tuition. And he said that he would consider that also. I think it was very productive.
He also took notes during the discussion. The city manager, Morgantown, was also present. And I think that there was some very positive interaction between everybody that was sitting at that table. I, just my personal comment is that I was particularly impressed with President Gee. Here, here's an individual that's sitting in a short-term interim presidency position, but his sincerity and his, his interest in, in the community and the relationship WVU has with the students, and what's going on with West Virginia University, I think was apparent. That he's sincere about it, and you have to really respect that from a person who knows that he's only going to be here a short time. In fact, if the search committee had its wits about it, it would probably try to keep him as, they could do much, much worse than him. And I'm not sure they could do any better than asking him if he would reconsider an appointment to that position. But he's concerned about the county. He asked me several questions. And he's concerned about the relationship. And one of the things I thought was significant was that he also made a statement that the meetings such as we had would be good on an ongoing basis. And so that the commission, and not necessarily the same representatives, what I was thinking about, and unfortunately didn't think about it at the time of the meeting, but I think we should maybe send him a formal invitation to our intergovernmental meetings.
Yeah.
I think it would be positive plus for us, and, and I think it would give him an insight into the whole community.
Especially in light of the WVU student, as well as other members of WVU participating already.
And we should thank him for the very tasty lunch.
Yeah. I'm glad you enjoyed it.
We told him, we told him that there was a very good group of students that had been attending.
Oh, you did tell him that?
Good. The only other comment I'd like to make, and I, I know I run a little risk with this, and I'm not trying to use this, this position as political tool, but I do feel like an obligation of serving as the president's commission, being a member of this commission, my term expires this year. And I did file yesterday for my candidacy for reelection to this position. And there's a number of reasons why I did it. I won't go into it during this forum. But I think there's a lot of positive for it. And I just think that fellow commissioners, you have a right to be aware of that, as well as the general public, didn't, didn't appear in the newspaper. And I just think that I have a responsibility to communicate that I will be a candidate for reelection for county commission. And that's all.
I went first last time.
Oh, you want me to go?
Yeah, well, tonight.
All right. Okay. It doesn't take the old guy first, like.
Yeah.
We, there's a lot of things, but we've been here a long time, and we'll probably go over them in the future. I can't help but address what, what took place here today on this Scotts Run thing. I mean, this was really outrageous, to distort what was said and what was done.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
It would have been better.
You are out of order.
This, this is a prime example of why so many people from Scotts Run and have contacted me, Tim Ball, other people. They are terrified from the bullying that has been going on down there. They have, they are literally terrified. Don't shake your head, no. I'm the one that got them. You just sit back there and you be quiet. Now, you sat up here and you distorted things just to get a form, told things that were not true. I have no respect for someone that does that. And you also tried to practice law. Now, I do have a lot of respect for Rachel Fettie. And I'm going to read what Rachel Fettie wrote to me, not distorted and publicity-seeking like you're doing. This was after the testimony. She wrote, "Dear Commissioner Callen, I just wanted to drop you a line to let you know that I and my clients appreciated your testimony yesterday. As you know, this situation has caused the community of Scotts Run some heartache. It meant a lot that you would come and explain what happened from your point of view. I know that you could have been less than forthcoming, but your honesty was heartening and reassuring to me and many other people. Thank you again, Rachel Fettie." That says it all. She should not be allowed to present again in this commission, in my opinion, because of her misleading statements.
I, just for the record, let me also comment that I received a very similar card from the attorney for the Scotts Run public service, I think they called it dissenters, or, but that also needs to go in the record, a letter, a card appreciation from the attorney for them.
Tom?
I didn't receive one, because I didn't testify, so I'm a little bit clear. Two good things. First of all, I will be meeting in the next week or two with the lawyers and Carrie Blaney. But I have some good news to report. One of the concerns was that there were two computers, only one that was working, that had all the maps. And what, I really want to thank Carrie Blaney, what she is going to do with the new server now is, the six computers along the side are now going to have all that information that was in that one computer. So that won't resolve our problem after hours, but that does expedite the situation and does help us out. And I know that it's going to be real positive. So I did want to say that. The second thing, I did want to say real quickly, I was honored and Eldon and I were able to go down with the Mon County delegation. And one thing that wasn't reported, that I think needs to be reported, was all four leaders, whether they be majority or minority, were actually taken back by how, how well, not only were we prepared, but that we offered a cross-section of Montague County, whether they be Republicans, Democrats, conservatives, liberals, who went in there and were all in it together. And all four of them stated they could not believe how together this county was, and wish the rest of the state was like this, and they looked forward to working with us and recommended us to come back. They really appreciated our input and was very interested. And as you said, people were actually taking notes and wanted to hear our input. So I think we really. So I think we really represented the county well, and I, I want to give Dan Kimball an enormous amount of credit because he set that up. It was exceptional. And I did ask that we do send a letter on behalf of the county commission. I'd like to Dan Kimball, thanking him and looking that we could do this on a yearly basis.
Tom, that reminds me of one thing. The, we need to commend Pace.
Oh, yes.
Pace did a tremendous job. And I would, I would, I meant to do this and it slipped my mind. I, those meals cost like $2,000. And, and I would, I would like to have the commission contribute like $500 towards that. The chamber is paying.
Lunch.
Has fronted all the money, but it goes to Pace. They did excellent meals. They fed all the delegates, all the staff. And, you know, Morgantown City, if everyone contributes a little bit, then it's not a big chunk for, for anyone. So, so I'd like to make a motion that we contribute $500 towards the lunches that are supplied to the, the delegates and the senators.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
In fact, what we could do, if it's possible, if they could come next meeting, we could give them the check, and those, the three individuals who were there, I think we should honor them. I think that would be something.
The Pace people.
The Pace people. I think that, I think they would really like that.
You have to range that to Dan.
If that's possible, yeah.
Well, then, we'd have to range that to Dan because they may have already paid him. But, but it would be nice for them to come, and we recognize them. It was exceptional that they were there.
Yes.
And the work they did.
They really did. Every legislator showed up. I mean, we couldn't believe, because the time was so short, that was their only lunch they could get. So it ended up, all the legislators had to come in, and we got to see them all.
Any other comments?
Move to.
Do we have any elected officials?
I just want to state for the record, I also received a note from Rachel Fettie.
Yes.
Your testimony. Yep. You were honest and forthcoming.
I was.
No elected officials. Department supervisors. Diane, any other comments? Bobby? Renetta? Janet? No? Comments from the public? If you raise your hand and stand, please state your name and address.
My name is Joyce Royce. I'm at 1016 Louise Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia. And I will tell you, I'm a little intimidated to speak about the Scotts Run Public Service District situation because of the animosity here today, but I feel like I need to. I was at the hearings, and I would just, I'm going to focus on the county commission's role in this, but I just want to read a couple of things that the administrative law judge said. She said, "In the haste to dismantle the Scotts Run Public Service District and merge its operations and facilities with MUB, several West Virginia laws dealing with public utilities were broken, that there was a requirement to apply for and obtain the consent and approval of the PSC before any action was taken." And I think that a lot of these actions were taken based on suggestions and allegations of possible wrongdoing on the part of the Scotts Run people by the board members who were appointed by the county commission, former and some present. And I think it was questionable, those board members who were appointed, there were questions as to their, some of them did not have the best interests of the Scotts Run Public Service District at heart, and that was shown. Another comment that the administrative law judge says was that "it appears that turmoil may have been manufactured at the district in order to bolster the district's merger with MUB." Also, she said that "a statute clearly anticipates that the public will be provided an opportunity to participate in a meaningful hearing regarding the disposition of the PSD prior to a final determination." This was not done. The PSD, Scotts Run did have a public hearing on May 22nd, but it was not meaningful. They were disrespectful to the public. They talked among themselves while things were going on. I would just ask that in future, going forward, and I know that you've changed some of your processes and you have an interview with people, but, you know, that you be careful about who you appoint to boards because it's really, really important. And I think that when some of those suggestions were being made about wrongdoing at Scotts Run Public Service District, it seems to me that if Eldon, if, I'm sorry, Eldon.
Sorry.
If Asal Kennedy could be a liaison with the Public Service District, perhaps it might have been good for some of the public, for the commission members to go there to see what was going on when it required that a deputy be appointed to oversee the commission meetings because they were so out of order. There were a lot of questions that were being raised, and a lot of complaints that were being raised about one board member in particular. And it just seems that perhaps maybe it could have been referred for audit, for example, because there were allegations of financial misdoings. And it seems to me that if the public commission is real concerned about public money, those issues might have been looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, we normally don't address, but I want to address her. She's got a legitimate question, and I'd like to give her a legitimate answer. We tried. I, I went there, and I went through the books, and I tried to get as much information I could. I also sought legal advice. And what you, who you need to go talk to is the legislators, because I've talked to the legislators myself. We have no power or authority. It's not right. We should have power and authority when the number of complaints, the number of issues, and not just there, we go to the others. I did go down there. I did try to get information. And what's interesting is the number of people that are now banned together actually spoke terrible about some of the prior board members, horrible about them, and made horrible accusations. I had no power to investigate. I came back, I talked to the other commissioners, as Commissioner Bartolo can confirm, and we looked into it, and we found out that unless we had proof of guilt, malfeasance, proof of guilt already, we had to have proof of guilt already, then, once we had that proof, we couldn't do anything but sue or go before a circuit court judge and prove our case before a circuit court judge. The, the way it's set up is next to impossible for the county commission to have proper oversight of these PSDs. So in your zeal, and I commend your zeal, and I commend your, your forthright position because that's what you did. You present a forthright position, and I respect that. And I would, along with you, if you would be interested, to take this to our delegates and see if we can't get some authority given to county commissions over these PSDs.
I would be happy to do so, and I appreciate your comments. And the efforts that you made to, to try to see what was going on. This thing is not settled. Yeah. There's a lot of stuff back there that, and I've read a lot, and I've gone to a lot of meetings, and it does, it concerns me greatly that people were maligned, perhaps on both sides. And I really hate to see this happen. Thank you.
I, I only have one comment. We normally don't make any comments, but at this point in time, we're beyond the county commission making any decision with this PSD. There's already been the public service hearing. The attorney for the people who are descending to this move, she has already indicated she's going to appeal. So, so the legal procedures is going to take precedent over anything else. Now, to look back, other than, than hopefully in a beneficial way at what has transpired to this point, serves no useful purpose unless you just want to bash this county commission. And you don't want to do that. You don't want to do that. And I'm not insinuating.
I apologize.
Excuse me, you're out of order again.
I'm apologizing.
Well, if you want to make a comment, we'll get to you, and you can make your comment. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is communicate to you a position that we, at this point in time, are, have no, have no vehicle to become involved in this issue. Now, can we go back and maybe make sure that if any mistakes were made in the past, they don't, they are not made again? Absolutely. And I think we will do that. And, and I, again, like Commissioner Callen, would thank you for, for speaking up in an appropriate manner. Now, any other comments from the public? Yes. Hopefully, your comment is appropriate, and I recognize you, in spite of there's some feelings that maybe you shouldn't even be given an opportunity to say anything. But go ahead.
Okay. I appreciate your second chance to me. I do want to apologize for the level of energy and vehemence with which I present my sense of things. I do admit that very often I am invested enough in a kind of emotional way that it's hard for me to present clearly things that, that strike me as important, and that I have checked, actually, with other people before I come here on my points to see whether they were valid. I'm just not very good at presenting them. I just want to ask, I, I know I'm not a lawyer. I have never tried to practice law. I've never tried to claim to practice law. I did, I did read the law because early on, Mr. Callen, and I appreciate you for suggesting this, early on in the first working meeting on May 22nd, we came to visit, or it was the 23rd, working meeting, you suggested to me that for, for a law to be, for a law to be practiced by the county commission, you wanted me to bring it in. And I regarded that as a kind of a personal, you know, suggestion and a challenge, which is why I did go to look at the West Virginia State Code and did bring up, as the judge in this case, Judge Blair said, 16-13A-18A. At the end of her recommended decision, she says, "If there had been some kind of hearing on 13-16A, or 16-13A-18A in a timely manner, then we probably would not have come to this really messy place." And I, I did, I must say, I did try my best to bring that particular piece of the code to the attention of all the parties involved. In addition, the, the whole code, the chapter 16, I don't want to be accused of practicing law here, so, but I would, what I'm begging to do is read it again and see that you do have some authorities that are maybe stronger than, than you might feel.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
One quick thing I forgot to bring up.
All right.
I'm going to leave it from this. In all due respect, this is driving me nuts.
Well, we don't want that to happen.
Is there, I mean, is there any way we can go to like that little, you know, something like that mic that we could put possibly here, or cut this down here? It is very difficult to read, see, and look. I mean, is there any, I mean, I don't know how the others feel, but it's very uncomfortable. Did anyone else feel that way? I'm.
I hate it.
Flat mics. Flat mics, yeah, it really is. It's just so, I, I keep moving it around, and I keep feeling bad because I know the sound probably goes all the time, but this is driving me, I see things in double. So if we could, if we could come up with another.
I, I think that's basis to do something. I mean, you're already nuts enough. We don't need.
That's a good way to, yes. You don't need to be more nuts. If we could look at that, I'd appreciate it. Some other options. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I move with adjourned.
Second.
I have a movement for adjourned and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.
Work session 2:00.